This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, good afternoon Wyoming, thank you for joining me. I am so thrilled to be able to work with you Wyoming, my name is Carmen Bowman. We're in a three-year culture change project together, this is actually the last month of the first year, can you believe it? And this is our March Madness, but how fun. Culture change online conference instead of doing it in person. In fact, everyone, I haven't yet started to ask this question, but we get to do another. We have budget to do another conference in this next year. And it was agreed upon to do it in five locations in your state. And I would love feedback if you think we could pursue that or not. And we can push it way back if we feel that'd be best, you know, to next March, I guess. I was kind of thinking actually, when I started this grant, I thought more like May or summertime, to be honest. Because weather could be bad, right? But anyway, I haven't started to ask for feedback and I would welcome that. I suppose maybe we could change it if we needed to back to online if you want to. Just curious, so we will be talking more about that and I welcome anyone's feedback. Today's special session is for Environmental Services, so you know who those guys and gals are and I hope some of you are on the line. And if not, they're welcome to listen to this recording. So I always have started with culture change, of course. And I have a little saying, "Culture change is still the answer." And I'm going to show you what I mean. I believe that changing institutional culture, by the way, that would be what we mean by culture change, is really able to give us many of the outcomes we all want. And with that, I'll give you one of many, let's say perhaps, definition of culture change. A leader in the movement has said, "No longer are the needs of the institution going to come before the needs of the individual." Wow, that is what culture changes, so that is what we're talking about, changing institutional culture. And guess what, the regulations and the guidance starts to speak to this more and more. You know, I can't do everything in each webinar, but I have been quoting some of these regs today and other webinars that say things like, "The schedules should be according to the people who live there, not for staff convenience." And it's saying this very thing, "Not for the sake of the institution." Isn't that something? Another way to maybe think of changing culture is to start moving away from the institution, the institutional ways, the institutional model, however you want to say it, institutionalization. And instead, move towards, a friend of mine says, "Well, start moving towards home life." But even better, keep moving and get to true home. And what would true home look like? You and I, who live in our homes, we make the decisions, right? About day-to-day things as well as longer-term things. So you'll hear more about this, giving people who live in the nursing home much more decision-making authority. And so let's look at those outcomes, when you create a culture where people actually want to live, when it's less institutional, more about them, guess what? That's when a nursing home makes money, as we all know, so boom, let's get that one out of the way. You can also save money by going with individual schedules instead of against them. If you just wake someone up, do you realize that's an example of inefficient work? Because we're kind of going against what someone's already doing. And we all know, keep going, you know? Some people might be more resistant than others, it's just a good example of inefficiency. And then inefficiency tends to cost money, when in fact, we're more efficient, we save money. Another culture change practice that saves money would be like consistent staff. When the same people take care of the same people, they know them well and boom, 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 they know what to do. But if I'm, you know, looking at someone I don't usually, you know, get to care for, boom, I'm going to be slower. And how many of you have had a person, a resident ever say, "Oh, do I have to train another one?" And that just breaks my heart and I'm sure it does you too. Ideally, no older person or disabled would have to train yet another person, right? We also call this redesign work, by the way, everyone's still going to get up and get dressed, but we redesign according to the people who live there. So I just love getting to think about, you know, if we were in person, it'd be much more fun to ask you, "Who of you are early risers and who of you are very late? Everyone else, where do you fall in between?" And then we would become a picture, let's say, of people living in a nursing home. And those who help us get dressed in the morning would know to come to the early birds first. And I'm starting to whisper because I love, I love teaching people, it's all about tiptoeing. Because when you don't wake people up, you're tiptoeing over the room and you are perhaps peeping. Back out, right, isn't that cool? And guess what, that represents a savings in money and let alone better quality of life, let alone more well-rested, right? Oh, I just love it. Then, of course, when you create these cultures where people also want to work, you're going to have less turnover, better recruitment. Let me tell you, in general, if you implement the culture change practices, you will see improvement in turnover and even recruitment. Obviously, you know, it's got the potential for better satisfaction all the way around. You're going to have fewer problems, fewer calls to the ombudsman, the state survey agency. There's so much I could cover, but you know, if we serve people real foods they love and that's a representation of saving money, saving money on supplements. Another practice is to get more and more people of all ages interacting with those who live in the nursing home. So certainly children, but I like to also verbalize, it's not always children, it's middle-aged people. It's in their twenties, people, it's people of all ages, right? And we got to do a grant also in Colorado, five years ago. The reason I know that is my daughter Ellie in the photo just turned seventeen yesterday and she was twelve in this project. And that is Maya in the photo with her, and look at what Maya said. At the end of the week, they did Monday through Friday day camp at the nursing home. Maya said, "The children brought back my happiness, my depression is gone and I stopped my medication today." Wow, you don't hear that stuff too often, do you? You don't hear it from the typical practices. And of course, you'll get compliance to be even better and you probably will go beyond regs. Because I love to remind people, right? And how about animals? I know it's a little bit tricky, people think it's so hard to have an animal in a nursing home and, to be honest, it's not. And I only say that because I know of nursing homes that have done it for thirty years, you know? And it's no big deal and we figure out ways to make it work for everyone. And isn't it cool that stroking a pet can reduce your blood pressure? You know, it's just so fun to think about unique ways, quality of life, real life, normal ways, instead of institutional medical ways to do things like decrease blood pressure. I actually ran into a physician order once that said, "Michael must have his dog with him wherever he lives." Isn't that cool? I think we need more physician orders like that, how about you? If you know a doctor, talk to them, okay? We also see birds changing people's lives, I am not even exaggerating. In Dr. Bill Thomas's first book, he writes about a gentleman who moved in to the nursing home. His diagnosis, "Failure to Drive," you know what that means, right? And apparently, they got his permission to put a bird in his room and he got so much better, guys. He not only started to take care of the bird, he got so much better, he moved out of the nursing home and to assisted living. I'm just flabbergasted. You see the greyhound in the photo there, something sweet about greyhounds is apparently they're very gentle. And because they're tall, people can reach them better. And I think you can kind of see, I'm sorry, it's a bad photo, but guess, you can kind of see it there on the side. There were two big greyhounds and they actually put two doggy doors into the corner of, you know, some sort of living room. So they can go outside on their own. And there we go, that's the kind of cool stuff we could use environmental service professionals to help with. Now, I'm going to share some of the highlights of the regs. Some of this is the same, I wanted everyone to hear the same in each special session and then some things are going to be very unique to you all in maintenance, housekeeping, etc. Did you know that in the new CMS regs, new, as of 2016, six years ago, many of the quality of life improvement changes in this final rule are grounded in the concepts of person-centered care and culture change. These changes not only result in improved quality of life for the resident, but they can result in improvements in caregivers or employees' quality of work-life and in savings to your home. So they're kind of listing these benefits as well. And then there's many definitions, but I wanted to show you kind of a new definition by CMS of person-centered care and look how powerful it is. This means to focus on the resident as the locus of control and support the resident in making their own choices and having control over their daily lives. Notice, notice, it actually doesn't have a lot to do with care. You know, it's sort of inferred, like be able to make decisions about my care. But notice it also kind of just speaks to life, making choices and having control over my daily life. Now we're talking, I sort of feel like it's more than care. And did you know, the terminology person-centered care was actually outdated? The minute that CMS put it in these new regs, the culture change movement had been referring to person-directed already. And so we'll talk about that, but I also want to mention and remind everyone that person-centered care is not just equal to culture change. And I think some people think that, even culture change leaders, it's kind of weird. They talk about person-centered care more than they talk about culture change. And as you can see, person-centered care, the care part is just one tiny component of the culture. The culture is your organizational, you know, the people that work there, the training, right? There's personal culture change, to be honest, as well as, you know, culture change that comes to the whole building. Physical, organizational and personal, I've always heard it in those three categories. And then I want to show you this, so person-centered, what care? Person-directed, what care? Resident-directed, care? Where is the life and the living, you see? So one thing you could all join us about or with is starting to talk more about the life and the living the people who live there are experiencing. And then care is a part of that, you know, that's one of the complaints, let's say, and why we even have a culture change movement. You could, if you want, start to use language like resident-directed life, resident-directed living. Another way that leaders in our movement have pointed it out is, I really appreciate this, that in the grammar, you know, you and I are self-directing our life and we want to do that at every age, no matter where we live. So maybe we could even, you know, bring that into it, no matter how old you are or where you live. We all want to have a self-directed life, you could maybe refer to self-directed living. And then I want to show you this, you know, when an older person has to make that big decision to move out of their house, even in Wyoming, you know, what is the first level they might move to? What's it called, independent what? Independent living, then they might need some more assistance, right? And what's it called? Assisted living, interesting, huh? And then, if you need more care, where do you go? And the language turns to care, long-term care, skilled nursing. And here's the big question, ready? Where did the living go? When I heard someone do this, I had tears dripping down my eyes. Because I realized, even in the title, we eliminated the word "living." So you don't have to, I don't have to. Look at this, it would be nice if when a person moves into a nursing home, they ask him or her, "How do you want to live?" And not just all that medical stuff. That's a great other way to say culture change. And, you know, what does life look like? More and more, if we all keep trying to look at life from the, through the lens of the people who live there, we will naturally change everyone. One thing I sort of realized more recently than not is, many of us, like right now, on the line, most of us are professionals who work in nursing homes, right? And therefore, we naturally tend to look at the nursing home as our workplace, our professional workplace. And I am the whatever, right? When I am the director of nursing, I got to be pretty medical, that's what I'm being paid to be, right? And I better talk pretty medical, there's kind of this pressure to, to, to talk and look medical, right? And we're very good at it, but the minute I might invite you to look at this place, this building, now through the lens of the people who live there, wow, I don't think I'd want my home to feel so medical, how about you? And I love how leaders have helped us here. So if it's home, let's call it that, we're not calling it a facility. Real people don't live in facilities, real people live in homes. Another nice word is community. We're trying to get rid of that F-word, by the way, we could have fun referring it to the F-word, right? And so wow, that makes sense, I would call it their home and this community. And they're not patients, we've even moved out of residence, everyone. And as you know, in your state, many people who live in nursing homes have decided to refer to themselves as neighbors. And if you look through the lens of living there, oh my gosh, that's exactly what they are, they're neighbors to one another. Now, does it feel medical and clinical and professional to refer to the neighbors? Not as much, but if we decide that's how we're going to talk, because that's their home and that's more important and it's going to help us, it's going to drive better practice, less institutional practice when we use words that are less institutional. So then, here's a big win, right? Watch this, when you're new in the institution, guess what you would be? You would be the new admit. Is anyone excited? Patty, are you excited to be the new admit? I know Patty's right here. Oh, Mark, you want to be the new admit? Anybody? And instead of the new admit, you get to be the new neighbor. Oh, I think that's such a beautiful example. All right, so some resident rights to make sure everybody knows about some big wins. Did you know, probably you do, "Each nursing home must treat each resident with respect and dignity and care for each manner, excuse me, each resident in a manner and also in an environment that promotes maintenance or enhancement of his or her quality of life." Yay, recognizing each resident's individuality. So I just want to pull this out, there's life, quality of life. Yes, we must hold on to that, everyone, and there's individuality. See, we're supposed to give individual care and treat people as individuals, not generic practices and making sure they all get treated the same. That's been a mark of the institution for a long time. Here's a quote I want to share with you from another leader in our movement, Carter Catlett-Williams. She has since passed away about a year ago and she would always convene, she's convening, starting the Piner Network Conference every year. Piner Network is our national culture change conference and organization. And Carter, as she got older, at one point decided to move out of her family estate. Like, you know what I mean, like it's been in the family and moved to independent living. And guess what, it only took a few months and she decided to move back home. And so you can go listen to her tell you why, but here's a little bit of her quote. She said, "What I see in the current culture is largely problematic. A varied program of activities is offered, trips to restaurants, ice cream shops, places of historic interest, shopping trips and many in-house activities. With such a wealth of activities, what can be lacking? What is lacking is real life. Real life is not found in programs, real life has been the give and take of everyday life. Our living in the apartment or touring bus screens us off of everyday life, we're turned in on ourselves. What is there to talk about other than times past of the faulty air conditioning?" So I just want to point out, here's an elder herself, a leader in our movement, who is helping us hear this. What is lacking is real life. So my message to all of you, particularly Environmental Services, is to help us, help people living there continue to have real life. Now, here comes a beautiful reg, notice this beautiful reg. "Did you know your nursing home must consider the views of a resident or family group and act promptly upon any grievances and recommendations of the group, such groups concerning issues of resident care and yay, life in that home." So, one way that homes are doing this is with a daily community meeting. And I won't do too much about it today, because guess what? Our next big culture change speaker coming up next Tuesday is Barry Barkin, who is one of the founders, developers of the community meeting. And he didn't just make it up himself, he actually ran a nursing home with his wife in California in the seventies. And he was very into civil rights and sure enough, he and the people who lived there developed this beautiful, now known as a culture change practice called the community meeting. And see, here's where you start to include people in making more decisions as well as just getting to know each other better. So you see the circle, it's always meant for both team, staff, staff-team members as well as residents. Community, right? You know, our team members have trainings and meetings, residents have activities and resident council and other meetings. And so we realize, smart people realize, we've got to come together more and really act like a community. And so that's what community meetings can do for your culture. Pardon me, now, in Colorado, when this took off, they probably did it mostly weekly. You could start that way, but to be honest, if I got to coach you, I would recommend daily right away. And to be honest, that really means Monday through Friday daily, I don't believe they do it on the weekends that I've ever heard. Because here's why. So not only might you involve people in, believe it or not, budget decisions, but my favorite part really is that if a grievance were to be, you know, passed in yesterday, the content of that problem issue would be brought to the daily community meeting. I said yesterday, right, so today. And so you get the idea, you are actually, you're actually dealing with any problems that might be stirring in real time. And this is amazing to me, this home that did this in Denver already like fifteen, twenty years ago, once they started doing daily meetings, okay? And now it's time to go to resident council, which is, how often? Once a month, guess what there was to talk about? Who can guess? After daily community meetings, there was, I just love this, nothing to talk about. And because of that, you know, they had fewer issues, to be honest. They dealt with stuff and think about it, if you have an issue today and resident council happened to be yesterday, you know, maybe you don't really have a forum until a month from now and that's not going to help anything, is it? I personally have learned from this home that doing things more often is better. And even, and by the way, let me teach you, resident council regs usually fall under your state regs, Wyoming. I could help you guys double-check this, some of you might know. And even though it might be required monthly, if you do anything more often than monthly, you know you're meeting that intent, you're rising above that minimal requirement. This, this, this home would also like sample things, can you imagine like sampling? Take your pick, coffee, which coffee do you like the best? How much does that one cost? Heard they're involving the people who actually live there in making those decisions, it's so good. Apparently, if someone walked into the nursing home, like a vendor, and said, "I'd like to see such-and-such manager to show them a new product," they would be told, "I'm sorry, you have to come back another time and come in the morning for the community meeting." And you can share your new product there. Amazing. Plus, of course, it's a beautiful forum for birthdays and the new people, like instead of, there's Freddy's new, you would give them the microphone or the new, a new team member, give them the microphone. That is the way to really get to know people. And then notice that reg I just read, "To affect grievances and recommendations regarding care and life in that building." It's really a beautiful depiction of both. All right, quality of life, I just wanted to share with you, is a fundamental principle that applies to all care and services provided. That was never stated before, this idea of a fundamental principle. And I doubt this would ever be a home in Wyoming, guys, but look at that bottom bullet. Non-compliance here identifies outcomes which rise to the level of immediate jeopardy and reflect an environment of pervasive disregard for quality of life. And this can also be a cumulative effect of non-compliance at other times. This reg never said that before. So, quality of life, guys, I hate to say it, but I think it sort of gets missed. And I kind of wonder if this idea might be why. I hope that doesn't offend anyone, but watch this, watch this, okay? You have environmental regs, who do the regs go to? Your environmental team, nursing regs, go to nursing, social services regs, go to social services, activity regs, right? And now we get to quality of life regs, who gets them? Who's job description and policies and procedures already include them? And you see, it might be a gap that we haven't thought about and maybe you all could get good at making sure that someone is tending to the quality of life regs. So that could be any, that could be a quality of life team. Sometimes I wonder if it should be social services and activities working tighter together as a team, the quality of life team. And certainly, today we're talking with Environmental Services, I'm going to share you some great ideas that you guys can help us with keeping quality of life at the forefront for the people who live there. Something else a lot of people don't realize, another big culture change win in the regulations is found a tag 679 activities under the intent. And this was shocking when I found it. "Look at the intent of this reg, to create opportunities for each resident to have a meaningful life by supporting his or her domains of well-being." What are those? There's seven of them, ready? Security, autonomy, growth, connectedness, identity, joy and meaning. These happen to be the seven domains of well-being as identified by the E and Alternative, which is a model of culture change. And there is a white paper, if you're interested, that you can download for free, right there, I'm showing it to you on the website. And so think about this, guys, what if we all got better at, at knowing, these are in the regs and doing something about it? And now you start to talk about, you know, Mr. Smith, I'm going to be asking him, "Do we really know you? Is there anything we're missing? How many of you have been to the funeral or read the obituary? And there was stuff in there you'd never knew about friends." And that bothers people and it should, right? We're missing stuff, guys, all our forms and our assessments, there's so many of them and we still miss stuff, I don't get it. Just go deeper with people and start to ask these questions, find your way. Bring these up at care conference, bring these up at resident council. Can you imagine the joy in asking someone, "What brings you joy?" And then, wow, connectedness, we did a webinar, it's archived if you want to watch it, called Creating Connectedness. What if everyone became a connectedness coordinator? It's one of my favorite topics, no matter who you are, what if that was your job? How would you connect people better? And then, meaning, what's for meaning to you? Autonomy means choice, we're supposed to get better at choice, there's lots of strong regs about honoring choice, security. And then, wow, no matter how old you are, did you know that we are all, we all should be growing and developing? And you don't really hear that, even though we love this business and we love older people, I never heard anyone say, "Now, we need to talk to Mrs. Smith about how she wants to continue growing and developing at age one hundred." You know, it's leaders like Barry Barkin, in fact, who's coming next Tuesday, he talks about helping, figuring out how to help people continue to grow. So I know this and maybe start doing something about it. We also could do a webinar on this in the next year, if you'd like. And then along the lines of the domains of well-being, it's also a concept embedded in these regulations since nineteen eighty-seven, by the way, called highest practicable level of well-being. And actually, I should have, I should have put all of them in there. And actually, I should have, I should have put all of them in there. The title should always be, I'm challenging myself, highest practicable level of physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing. You've probably seen it all over the regs. Quality of life has it, you know, the end of the sentence, quality of care, end of the sentence is this, right? Almost every reg, I should, I should count how many times, it'd be fun to do a word search. But the strongest place really where it tells us what to do, I believe, is here at six fifty-five, comprehensive person-centered care planning. Look at this, the care plan must describe the following. The services that are to be furnished to attain or maintain the resident's highest practicable, physical, mental, and psychosocial wellbeing. Does your care plan describe services you're gonna furnish to help this person? Is it attain or maintain? I kinda think of attain, kinda reaching higher, or maintain, because they're already there. The resident's highest practicable, does it identify physical? And then also mental, and then also psychosocial wellbeing. And if you're not doing this, I highly recommend it. You know why? You're supposed to. Surveyors could be citing it. And, um, it's kind of a wonderful thing to, to land on. It's, it's a place where you can be creative. I sort of feel like this is why we got into this beautiful business right here. It's to help people, you know, be all they can be. And then let me show you something in the language, if, if you want, I, nobody can hear you. But I would encourage you to say the word out loud, ready? Practicable, practicable. Because it's not very common and what tends to flow off our, our lips is practical. And to be honest, that's part of the problem, you know? I don't know if you really say this, but our institutional ways kinda come out, well, that's not practical. We don't have enough staff, we don't have enough time. And forgive me, I know we're also dealing right now in hard times. So just let this be a training for you, an education, right? But your nursing home did sign up to help people reach or maintain their highest practicable level of, um, those three levels of wellbeing. Another neat thing I've learned is the word within the word. Notice we have a word able within practicable, which really kinda drives, um, understanding it. Whatever someone is able to do, they're supposed to be doing. So here's a definition, innate capability based solely on the individual's abilities and limitations and potential, independent of any external limitations. Whereas practical is that capability based on resources available to support a person's abilities, potential, and address limitations. So if someone can feed themselves, they should be, even if it takes a long time. If someone can walk, they should be, even if it, even if they go slow. Uh, and here's some of my favorite ones, okay? With, with environmental service team members listening on the line. Lucky was the first person to ever teach me what this really means. And he doesn't even know it. So many, many years ago, in a nursing home, when I was a surveyor, um, you know, surveyors do what they call the initial tour. And they have to quickly meet as many people as they can in a short amount of time. And so if you were the surveyor, what would you ask? You know, they're, we're asking things like, how's the food here? How do they treat you? Do you get your needs met? How are the activities? And on that one, Lucky said, what activities? And, you know, I am, was an, an activity professional, activity director. And, and said to Lucky, hey Lucky, I know they have lots of activities here. In fact, everyone, they had a child daycare center on site. So imagine, there's a lot more activity going on in general in most homes, right? So I, I say, hey Lucky, I know they've got exercise, bingo, current events. And he says to that, if you call those activities. So I said, Lucky, if you could do anything, what would it be? And notice the words he chose everyone, he said, I am an electrician. That's a very strong identification with a past role. And so ideally, once it'd be cool, if Lucky had kinda said this and said, oh my goodness, you can't believe this place. They know that I'm an electrician and I love being an electrician. And so they talked to me and they asked me, invited me to be the consult, uh, to the, to the maintenance guys. So whenever they run into an electrical issue, they come get me. I love it. I love living here. I love, love, love it. Now imagine, even if you had dementia and we're good at knowing people, perhaps this care plan says, I am invited by the maintenance team to come hang out with them. You know, certainly it could be just when there's electrical issues, but I have a feeling someone like that might enjoy it more often. And so this is a great, um, invitation to those of you working in maintenance, housekeeping, to please never dismiss the idea that there may be someone whose highest practicable has something to do with what you do. Here's another one, check this out. Also, when I was a surveyor on a different survey, I was, you know, observing my three sample residents and one of them, Nora, every, every moment, huh, she moved a lot and she had her hand flat. And she was always dusting, always, dusting, always, always, always cleaning up and dusting with her hand. Well, well, let me ask you, what could you give her to make her motions more purposeful? Obviously, like a, a cloth, right? A dust rag and yay, better than a hand. But you know what I realized? Again, without her telling me, I realized, you know what? The cloth simply pacifies her. It's sort of like us going, we're very busy, but here's a cloth, right? Which is fine, it is better. But I think the reason I ever even thought of that is because, guess who I saw come on to the neighborhood? Let's just say Aston neighborhood, where people live who have dementia. Guess who came on like clockwork every day at ten thirty, ready? Housekeeping, I think of the hotel, right? Housekeeping. And because I saw the same person come every day at ten thirty, I thought, wow. What if the care plan had said, I clean with the housekeeper every day at ten thirty? Now we're talking highest practicable. And which one would it be? Mental, psychosocial, or physical? In some cases, it might be all three, right? Depending on the person. And can residents set tables? Yes. Can residents clear tables? Yes. Yes, yes, yes. And does there have to be good infection control? Yes. So if somebody who lives there has poor infection control, let's say I pick my nose, sorry. I just wanna point out common sense, I'm not the one to set the tables. Maybe I'd be better at clearing the tables or maybe some other job, right? Just go with your gut, everyone, don't panic. Just go common sense. Some people are dying to, to contribute. And this could be a picture of their, their, what they're capable, what they're able of doing. And we just have to figure out how to make it work for all of us, right? And we need your help, those of you on the environmental services team. Here's some other cool photos of real people doing real things. Look at that man vacuuming, okay? He is really vacuuming and he did almost every day. And here's something very special about him. If I happen to witness this, I spent, uh, a week in this nursing home, not overnight, but I studied the household model nursing home. And I saw team members come up to him and say, hey Charlie, would you like the vacuum today? And he goes like this, ready? Now what do you think that means? It kinda looks like no, right? Well, I happen to know what that means, cuz my grandma's from this same town. I think it's so funny, what that really means is, don't you young people know how to vacuum? But it doesn't mean no. And he gets up, and he vacuums and it brings meaning and purpose into his life. And can we just say out loud, it is very, very helpful to you all who are working your tails off in this place to create a good life for people, okay? Look at the next one. That gentleman went by what was happening in the hallway and apparently grabbed a paint roller and started painting. You know, isn't it sad that in probably most cases, most of us would panic? But I wanna be a voice for, that is it, that is real life. He's showing you what he wants to do, he wants to contribute. And even, yes, perhaps with the dementia, many people know what to do with paint and a roller. I remember long ago seeing a man in a courtyard, ready, air quotes, painting the fence. Guess what he was painting with? And I was excited back in the nineties, I'm embarrassed to say, he was painting with water. Don't let that happen, guys, nobody do air quotes for anything ever again, would be my vote. Cuz it shows you it's fake, it's not real. So invite the guys who want to paint, to paint. The guys who wanna consult with electrical work, consult. The women who show you, they want to dust and clean. They want to set the table, they want to clear the table, they want to fold. Don't have them fold fake towels, guys, have them fold real linen napkins for the real meal coming up. Or fold real towels in the laundry room. And again, yes, of course, infection control should always be followed. We know that more now than we did before. Doesn't mean it can't happen. Uh, real babies, we need more real babies, everyone, and it's, it's really the truth. Um, you know, babies grow fast, it can't just be the activity director to go find all the babies. It would need to be a team effort. If I worked with you, I'd be saying, hey, what babies do you know? What babies do you know? And inviting people to invite their cousins and neighbors and their babies. And, and really people of all ages, again, not just babies, but we certainly need some babies, don't we? And then we have a person really cooking in the kitchen, because in the household model, there's a kitchen in the house. And we have a person doing their own laundry. And so I just wanna let you all know that perhaps your environmental services team could help find a place in the building where there could be a more, um, household washer and dryer. Because for some people living there, some residents, they might enjoy doing their own wash. Family members might enjoy doing wash instead of schlepping at home and schlepping it back. By the way, all that schlepping makes no sense to me. How much money do people pay to live in a nursing home? And at the same time, we should not be shrinking clothes or losing clothes. So what many culture change homes do is they have a washer and dryer actually on every neighborhood. And it becomes incorporated into the life of every neighborhood, whether the resident does it or team members do it. And then we don't lose the clothes, they don't shrink. And, um, a person can do it if they can. Family could stay and visit and be with instead of leave and go to the laundry. You know, it's so good to think of families just living life together. That would be a great opportunity, a great picture. A leader in our movement says, don't let families feel like they have to pay a visit. You know, call that out and instead encourage them to remit the person into their life. And so I think of like, if a woman wanted to paint her nails, don't do it at home, do it at the nursing home with mom, let's say. You know, the laundry becomes such a great example of living life together. And also for our environmental services team members, I wanna show you a couple neat environmental, culture change practices. One is, uh, that institutional call lights are no longer over the door. That's very institutional, very hospital-like. And this is an old cinder block building where the maintenance guys were very creative. They rewired and there are no over the door call lights. And instead, it's like a porch light, where a porch light might sit next to a door. And so if a person turns on the call light, then the porch light is on, isn't that great? I love that. They also put in a doorbell, do you see the doorbell? A doorbell really doesn't cost that much money, I've been told. It takes a little triple A battery. And then a person could actually have a doorbell if they wanted, just like you and I do. Wow. And then mailboxes are also a practice that can be offered, that again, is more personal and normal. Um, and I think it was a maintenance man and his son made all the mailboxes just as a project for all the rooms in this particular home. All right, I wanna show you something. Uh, hang on, actually, yeah. I wanna sh- this, the, what, the, the reason there is a number there is that's in the artifacts tool. We actually use that in this project as well. And I wanna show you this regulation under safe environment. Uh, did you know, hmm, hang on, that's not the one, this one. Did you know that you can have an audible or visual call light system? So let's look here, resident call light system tag one nineteen. The intent of this requirement is residents, when in the rooms and toilet and bathing areas, have a means of directly contacting caregivers. In the case of an existing centralized nursing station, this communication may be through audible or visual signals and may include wireless systems. Look at that, or, did you know it said or since nineteen eighty-seven and it still says or? So if you have a choice to do visual or audible, which one would you pick? And I would, that'd be amazing, let's say Wyoming becomes famous for using only visual porch light systems instead of all the beeping noise. Oh, and then here's the noise issue. Did you know that your nursing home is supposed to have the maintenance of comfortable sound levels? Which comfortable sound levels are? Do not interfere with residents' hearing and enhance privacy when privacy is desired and encourage interaction when social participation is desired. A particular concern to comfortable sound levels is the residence control over unwanted noise. Wow, our call lights, unwanted noise, you could start asking people. And you could use what they say, say to guide you in doing the option here right at the regulation. Here's some more mailboxes and other style mailboxes. And then, another neat thing I'd love for this team to know about is the fact that you could have seating in the hallway. So, so a little, I got a little backstory here. Um, I've been so blessed to be a part of big culture change projects. And in two thousand and eight, I got to facilitate, um, a big symposium for CMS and the Prior Network on Culture Change and the Environment. And we learned that these long hallways are a big problem. You know, particularly for people to be able to walk and rest and walk again. And did you know that the National Fire Protection Association got super excited about our movement? And they made four big changes, four. And I'm just gonna tell you about one right now. And this, you can look it up, Life Safety Code two thousand and twelve, physical layout maximizes independence. And so it's kinda funny to me, but in this particular nursing home, uh, the nuns back in two thousand and one, they put furniture in the hallway, even though there was a reg that told them not to. So we happen to have a photo when it was illegal. And then after two thousand and twelve, it's now, let's say, legal. But here's what it looks like, it's also called corridor seating. Your furniture must be securely fastened to the floor or wall. And those simple brackets work well. It must leave at least six feet clear width for the corridor. So if you have an eight-foot hallway, which I believe most typically are, you can use two feet of it, as long as it leaves six. And then some hallways, I guess, uh, width is, is ten feet. Then these furniture groupings must always be on one side, that makes complete sense. And the groupings cannot exceed fifty square feet and they must be spaced at least ten feet apart. So at the very least, you can have a chair in the hall, some of us call this the chair in the hall reg or life safety code. And maybe those of you representing, uh, plant operations and maintenance could become an expert on this and promote it. How cool would that be? And then you guys see this, those photos there basically represent a good care plan, right? Meds, getting dressed, basically ADLs, eating, ugh. I'm sorry to say, it kinda looks boring to me, how about you? And we could say that's a perfect care plan, but where's the life? You know, that should kinda be the minimal part. Good care should be a given, is how I think of it, why do we talk about it so much? Shouldn't we have that under control by now? And then what if the real focus was on what this person loves to do? Lucky loves to help the maintenance guys, right? So think of living in life and quality of life and the highest practicable again, and the domains of wellbeing. So I wanna invite you all to just be aware of our culture change coalition of Wyoming. We are seeking to make these changes in the thirty-eight nursing homes in your state. We have big goals, one of which is to boldly go where no state has gone before, Wyoming. The fact that you're little, you could do it. You could do it different, you could do it better, you could do something other states have never done. Uh, the Mountain Pacific, uh, website has a lot of our activities on it, uh, at this particular spot. But then there's another spot, I'll show you here in a minute. Um, part of our project is working with five homes more closely. Um, part of our project is working with five homes more closely each year. And I want to invite you to something special next Friday, March twenty-fifth, two P M, your time, mountain time. You will get to hear the stories and the lessons learned from Star Valley, South Lincoln, Granite over the whole year. And then from Life Care of Casper and Wyoming Retirement, from their about half a year that they've been in it. And by the way, I'm looking for three more homes to join very, very soon. Uh, please, please get in touch with me. And then um, today, there is today. And I already mentioned Tuesdays coming up, please join us for community meetings. And then really the next special session would be the twenty-fourth for nursing. And there's the webinar I mentioned on the twenty-fifth. And I just highlight the next big ones coming up. We also have two big goals for, for the coalition and for your state, everyone. Number one is that all people working in a nursing home would learn about culture change. They need your help with that. Everything we're doing is recorded. All these webinars are recorded. You could take advantage of that. And number two, it's just a big audacious goal. What if every person living in a Wyoming nursing home was never woken up? And they slept until their body got enough rest. Uh, I mentioned the artifacts tool. If you're interested, there's the website. Here is the other place on the Mountain Pacific website that has all these um, all the webinars from this past year archived. I'm sure want to thank them. Jill Hallton's helped a lot with that. Also, the handouts for all of these are there. So I'm gonna just um, maybe give uh, my takeaways and then open it up for conversation. So what if environmental service teams promoted, really promoted you guys true home? Not home-like, better than that. What about, hey, mailboxes, doorbells, things that are normal that you would have at your house? Porch lights instead of institutional call lights, the light only instead of the noise. You know, don't just let that be a nursing thing. It could be everybody's thing. Uh, maybe brainstorming and all of you talking about which people who live there have kind of shown you, they would love the vacuum or sweep or dust or help with meals or folding real things, right? And talk more about life and normal life and real life and quality of life. I'd love to hear if any of you have just thought of a person who could do more, right? Their highest practicable. And remember, all this is in the regs. Isn't that cool? And so um, let me uh, pause there and ask if we have any questions. So you know, use your role wisely, everyone. And um, tell me now what your questions are and comments, please. You can just unmute yourselves for a small group today. And I'm pressing all the buttons that say ask to unmute. So you could if you wanted to. Anybody have a question? Your turn. Can I hear from somebody too? Thank you, Eric Bowley. He said he may know of one nursing home um, that wants to join your two things, Eric. And Mark says mahalo from um, from Hawaii. He's part of the Mountain Pacific group. Sure wish we were sitting in your state, Mark. Hey Patty, what do, what do you got?
Um, I, I don't know. I really, I really liked the information that you provided regarding, you know, some of the environmental services that could be changed. Um, I, I think it's awesome. You know, people have decorations and things in their hallways and and that's what I think kind of marks an institution is that their, their hallways are white and they've got the handrail and it's, it's very blah and, and institutional-like. And so putting, you know, just those little bitty remodeling can, can make such a huge difference. I love that little, you know, the little porch light and, and the doorbell and, and the mailbox. I mean, you know, we grew up being excited about going to the mailbox.
That's right. Oh my gosh. Our daughter insists she picks up the mail. That's so true. It's so fun. Thank you.
So that would be so much better than, than just having somebody hand it to you. You know, you get to go to, then you pick the time you want to receive your mail and and I think, I think it's really, really neat and, and I really um, applaud those who have changed things like that. That's awesome.
Me too. Um, well, anyone else? I have two little things I could share that have come to mind. Little. I just said two little things and here's why. Uh, some of you, I believe, um, maybe are working with team members to, to do life together. And I want to share something odd that I've noticed. I heard, it was actually, I think, like a maintenance man who said, yeah, we're trying to do some little activities with the residents. And, and you know what they were? They were real life. And I just want to encourage you all, you know, there's something odd about that, isn't there? Like, it's okay to be real life. And not, and not think of it as, um, well, we are doing some little activities. You see what I mean? Isn't that odd? Like, we treat normal like maybe we're not supposed to do that. And I believe it might be coming from my second point. And that is that we shy away, we get nervous when it comes to what we might think is work, okay? CMS has a strong regulation. It used to be called work. I don't think it really has that title anymore, but if you do a word search, you'll find it if you just use the word work. And it's, it's good. It's healthy. It's fair, okay? It's so interesting to me. Okay, this reg has been around since eighty-seven. It's essentially the same, a little bit reworded differently. But um, what I've always wondered is if people really read the whole reg. And here's why. The regs used to start with this. Ready? Residents have the right to not work. And I sort of think, like, everybody stopped and panicked, right? And it's kind of been out there. Oh, they can't work. They can't work. That's bad. But guess what? The next sentence said this. Ready? Residents also have the right to work if they want to. And then, now the reg puts it, smushes it together. Residents have the right to not work or work, depending on their preference. And then it also goes on. It's, what I think is it's very self-explanatory. So go read it. It goes on to say, you know, as long as it's agreed upon and whether or not there's a wage that's agreed upon and it's in the care plan. Ta-da. So I have a feeling that could be where some of the hesitancy comes from. And I love, love, love letting you know that the regs actually support us. Okay, well, if there's no more comments, feel free. Oh, we're about done. But um, I also have some language in the handout. Uh, as we have time, I love to mention also using more normal language. So for instance, I think we covered uh, home and community um, compared to this awkward facility. By the way, I don't know if y'all know this, but St. John's Living Center, that's, that's a pretty good title, right? St. John's Living Center has actually changed to an even better title, in my opinion. Ready? They're now called Sage Living. Isn't that cool? I know a similar story where in Minnesota, a place called Perm Memorial Home became Perm Living and Perm Memorial Hospital became Perm Health. And see, there's, there's the point. There's power and language and let's, you know, help me Wyoming. Let's, let's challenge ourselves to talk more about life and living than anything else. Thank you so much for joining me.
Thank you, Carmen.
You bet. Thanks, everybody.